I'm going to recall this teaching and learning in the special ed subcommittee, combined subcommittee meeting to order, and with your permission superintendent, I'll turn it over to Mr. Segalor and his team for the CTE, CVTE program improvement.
Thank you, Ms. Lebo, and good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure tonight to share and highlight Quincy Public Schools Career Vocational and Technical Education's Program Improvement Plan 2324. Welcome Rebecca McGinnis, CVT Department Chair at Quincy High School. Unfortunately, Marion Conley, CTE Department Chair at North Quincy, is attending the North Quincy High Parent Teacher Conference this evening, so she cannot be here. Quincy Public Schools Career Vocational and Technical Education Program provides practical instruction and valuable intellectual content alongside academics. North Quincy and Quincy High foster a stimulating environment where traditional programs exist side by side with cutting-edge 21st century competency-based career pathways, 19 to be exact, including automotive, business technology, carpentry, criminal justice, culinary arts, design and visual communications, early education and care, electrical, engineering, fashion, film and television production, healthcare, information support and networking services, metal fabrication, and plumbing technology. Approximately 1,300 students are currently enrolled in Quincy's Chapter 74 programs, including 346 students participating in freshman seminar, our exploratory program. Our vocational programs are industry certified, have strong business partnerships, and a variety of post-secondary initiatives, including articulation agreements, CVT pathways, dual enrollment, and early college high school. We encourage our students to take an active role in their own education. It is our hope to send our students to the world of work, forces, or post-secondary education with the necessary skills and knowledge for long-term success. Staff and students have the opportunity to explore current industry trends in collaboration with our community business partners, Quincy CVT General Advisory Team, and program advisory teams. Through this collaboration, our competencies and technical vocational teaching areas are guaranteed to be industry-specific and meet industry standards. Quincy CVT staff members are trained, experienced, and state-certified in the craft field they teach. Our educators deliver instruction in safety and health, technical, embedded academics related to their subject matter, as well as employability and career readiness, management and entrepreneurship, and technological skills required for workplace success. Our vocational program offers multiple educational resources for students, including school-based or work-based learning opportunities, such as job shadowing, co-ops, apprenticeships, internships, clinical placements, live work in technical areas, community service learning, and employment experiences. These opportunities are available to all students. Educational resources open doors to careers, colleges, and the future. I'd like to begin with the reflection of our 2223 CVT team and program advisory team goals highlighted on page seven. Please note the 202223 CVT goals are continued throughout the 202324 school year. I, we, are pleased to report that each of these goals have been successfully completed. CVT team goals, goal number one on page nine. The CVT team will continue to utilize the writing prompt "My Career Vocational Education Experience," including a rubric for Quincy's Career Portfolio Initiative. The writing prompt will include one or more of the six vocational frameworks. Goal two on page 10, to support our high school's school improvement plan, goal of social-emotional learning. Team members will continue to implement a variety of character development strategies, including empathy, ethics, and growth mindset into our curriculum. Goal three on page 11, to increase non-traditional pathway opportunities for high school students to ensure success beyond graduation. And goal four, page 12, during the 202223 school year, team members will continue to provide students a variety of additional curriculum enhancements and educational opportunities. These curriculum enhancements complement our CVT programs. We're proud of these traditional events and initiatives. They include job and career fairs, the fashion show, Innovative Engineers Capstone Project, National Business Honor Society, the Tiny House Project, Women in the Trade Summit, CNA pinning ceremony, and the Credit for Life Fair, just a sampling. The program advisory team goals are as follows. Goal one, which is on page 16, design and develop our program advisory team report that is presented to you, members of the school committee, in the spring each year. Goal two on page 16, to enlist the general advisory and the program advisory team members to present a relevant lesson or visitation to their workplace or post-secondary institution for students in the Career Vocational Education Program by the end of each year. As previously discussed, our 202324 team goals, pages 19 through 17, are continued from the 202223 school year. These goals were established for a three-year period. Modifications were made through action steps, timelines, and sources of evidence as needed. In regards to professional development, on page 19 through 20, staff continue to participate in a variety of professional development initiatives, including civil rights and student records confidentiality training, teach point evaluation systems training, our CVT core indicators review of populations, update curriculum guidelines with embedded frameworks in preparation of our NEAS visitation on December of next year. A professional day of learning, which was held on November 7th. A professional day of learning provided staff the opportunity to visit neighboring career vocational technical high schools, including Blue Hills, South Shore Regional, or Southeastern Regional. During this time, Quincy educators met their CVT program counterparts, observed methods and teaching strategies, reviewed curriculum guides, discussed and reviewed departmental goals, vocational frameworks, safety, student credentials and certifications, as well as work-based learning initiatives. Team members returned to Quincy High School for lunch, followed by participation and breakout session two. They concluded the day with the closing keynote speaker, Alan Polinsky, Superintendent of Old Colony Regional Vocational School, who presented "Beyond the Curriculum: Transforming School Culture." Superintendent Polinsky was exceptional, and if you don't believe me, you can certainly ask the 42 vocational teachers that attended that event. A terrific day was had by all. Finally, in the appendix 2223, page 21, you'll find a variety of CVT documents, including the program listing of students' certifications and credentials, our core indicators review of populations 2122, and a variety of documents from our vocational program advisory team that was held on October 19th, including our program advisory team membership, invitations and flyers, both agendas for Quincy and North, and lastly, the post-secondary initiatives brochure that we're very proud of, offering again the dual enrollment, CVT pathways, and early college high school. So at this time, Rebecca and I are answering your questions.
Any questions for my colleagues who are on the committee? Ms. Cahill?
One, I have a question about the certifications, the blue sheets that you gave us. So when they have all those checkmarks, is that what they can earn during the four years that they're here? Like, these are the, those checkmarks means those are certifications?
Those checkmarks, thank you, those checkmarks indicate if it's a state, a federal, or local certification.
And they will earn those while they're in the program?
That is accurate, yes.
Right? Okay, great. And then I think I have one other question. Hold on, let me find my sticky notes. Oh, my other question was, the, the, North Quincy Quincy High has a couple of different offerings in each school that, you know, some of them are the same, and there's a couple that, for an example, criminal justice or computer science. If a student wanted to take something, I'd see the other ones that are all at Quincy, but that, that would probably, it's reflective of the workplace, you know, the workstations and things like that, the plumbing, the electrical. But if it's something like a criminal justice, for an example, and, and you're offering it at Quincy, could North Quincy kids jump into that? How do we do that?
100%. You'd have to transfer to Quincy High.
They'd have to come over?
Yes.
Okay. So that was that question, and I think, I think everything else was answered for me. That's good. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gotch.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. A quick question on page eight, the core indicators. Can you just, so I had a couple of questions. Why 2021 there and the appendix says 2122?
What I did was we were reflecting on the 202122.
Is everything like two years behind or something?
Yes, it is. That's the state. This is provided and produced by the state.
Interesting, yeah.
So, Mr. Gotch, the MCAS data has been out, but the core indicators are still being held.
That's right.
They have not, the state has not gotten around. It's ridiculous, but...
Yeah, and, and so do you, I mean, so we could be, I mean, we're years behind. It's not, so it's not really a helpful indicator for you to move forward on, or it is?
We use it to, to, again, if you, for example, a non-traditional enrollment, and we use that data to help us drive certain lessons and activities within the program, and through your support and the mayor's support, we were able to put on the two CVT support liaisons that are helping us today with non-traditional careers and lessons that they collaborate with our vocational teachers.
So, so looking at the "did not meet target," that's where you, you move into the goals for the next year and you make the amendments based on that?
That is correct.
But you don't know what the data was. So the 2122 data, that what, it has to be certified by the state, is that it?
It's certified, but it's also produced, and it's produced sometime in October.
Okay, so you, so the reason why the 2122 is there, so how is that 21, and I didn't get a chance to look through, because you broke it down nicely on page eight, how does 2122 correlate with 2021?
Making slight improvements. If you look at the back, if you look at, again, the appendix is in there, 2122.
So it shows?
Yes. For example, in non-traditional, we didn't meet the male population, but we met the female population.
So the percentage, it said 18.87% did not meet non-traditional. What was it in 2122?
20, 20.35?
So it went up?
Yes. And it went to green, which we met 90%. Oh, I'm sorry, we exceeded, we exceeded the state.
Yeah. Was there anything else that jumped out at you between 202021 and 202122?
Just a few of the special populations, the black, African-American, Hispanic, went down a little bit, and we need to focus a little bit more on that, those special populations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. McGinnis?
Just to follow up, and Mrs. Cahill's question about offerings at both high schools. We've talked last couple of years about getting some of the offerings at Quincy High School over at North. What's the status of that? We have, we have to put it in the budget, right?
Right.
Can we do that?
It would be up to you. If you do, I'd be glad to offer those programs.
If he offers one more Chapter 74 program, they will be required to put an exploratory program in, which will require eight periods a day, which will require enormous staffing, because that's what happened at Quincy High School. So when you have to put, have somebody in front of a kid eight periods a day, you would have to have all the kids exploring it. It becomes, I mean, it would be a huge budget thing, and I don't know that the state would even, since we have the program, unless, unless it's so oversubscribed that we, some of these programs are not, are on the waiting list, so the kids aren't coming for them. So it becomes difficult to put that, they can put technical programs in, they've been doing a great job with that, they just don't have Chapter 74 programs.
It could be non-74.
Non-Chapter 74.
And give students that opportunity.
Yeah, which we've been doing. He's been doing that, they've been doing that. There's a lot of non-Chapter 74, but as soon as you get to Chapter 74, automatically we'd have to put an exploratory program in, which is eight periods a day. Frank can tell you, it's very, very expensive. Every kid in the school has to have an extra period education. So it's, it's a mind shift, we would have to really look in the long and hard.
There aren't, I mean, there aren't as many of them that we're not offering at both, you know?
Well, there's enough, like fashion and criminal justice, fashion, which is, but it's not like those programs are oversubscribed here, you know, you don't have a big waiting list for those two programs, do you?
At North?
No, here.
No.
So, those kids could come for those programs. I know that's not the answer you wanted to hear. I'm sorry. Mr. McGinnis, anything else?
No, just state controlling what we want to do. Just drives me.
Mr. Soglan? I'm sorry.
Just that space is an issue as well. You have to have so many square feet for the program. Certification versus non-certification. The programs at Quincy High are certified. Are all the programs at North certified?
Four, four of seven, because if we offered that fifth vocational program, we'd have to offer the exploratory.
Correct, freshman seminar.
Yes. So therefore, we could offer another non-74. We could, we could opt to, like, criminal justice could be another course, non-74, until the decision is made as a district to offer.
What's the difference in funding? Certification versus non-certification?
There's no certification.
No, no funding from the state, but the kids could still get certifications, but the Chapter 74 funding would not follow them.
Would not follow?
Not unless they were Chapter 74 program.
Correct. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Soglan?
No, that's fine, that's fine. So my question is regarding the early childhood, early education programs that we offer. Between Quincy College and Quincy Public School offerings of these programs, is there any, are there any programs that we offer that teach about leadership or management skills, or the skills involved with, like, opening their own center after they leave Quincy Public Schools, or some kind of a capstone project in which they're creating a childcare facility that would be involved in any of these programs that were, because I looked through some of what I could find, and I was trying to figure out if maybe that fell into a scope that I just wasn't seeing.
Part of, each of our vocational programs incorporate or integrate leadership, management, entrepreneurship in their curriculum, so it's a requirement. So they do discuss and explore all those opportunities.
Okay, so like, when they left our school system, would they be in a position in which they could go on a track, in which they could open their own center or kind of thing, or are they on a track that they could just go work in a center?
They'll walk out with their EC license, and they do explore again through the instructors themselves with, again, management entrepreneurship integrated into their curriculum.
Okay, but we don't offer anything that's specifically?
Leadership, we do it in freshman seminar.
And they are, the management of those things are in the frameworks, but nobody would just a, it says, what's the first level of teaching at nursery school? There's a level.
Pre preschool.
The first level, though, of teaching, it's like a...
Assistant teacher. Basically, an assistant teacher.
Yeah, those people would not be qualified to open their own, so you would have to have them before their education, before you could open your own business anyway.
Because our, our students do walk out with their state teaching license, but that wouldn't be enough to come up with the funding and start their own day, you know?
Yeah, they wouldn't have the skills yet to be able to do that, though. They would need to take, they would need to take more classes in order to get the skills to be able to do that. That's what was more my question, was would they have the skills to be able to do that?
But the good thing is they have the management know-how to know that they shouldn't do it yet.
That's right.
That you don't want to go, you don't want to go out on that limb until you really know what you're doing. So the management tells people how to do that, the management file the frameworks.
Thank you.
Frameworks, the CTE frameworks are wonderful. I don't have any questions, but I have a couple of comments. Oh, one question. So we're fully staffed, I know we had some trouble last year, especially in ISSN. Are we fully staffed in our Chapter 74 programs?
Yeah.
Thank goodness, I was hoping you were going to say that. Which programs are able to do co-ops? I know with the schedule, it's a little difficult, but which programs are actually able to do co-ops, true co-ops?
All of them could do a co-op. Last year, we had three plumbing students that went out at seven, and they were here at 11 and went to classes in the afternoon, because many of the hard shops, the trades, they want, their days start at seven and they're done at three, so they, they don't want a student at noon time. So we're able to do that. We, we are flexible, and we help students go out on co-op. I've already talked to a student this year that he will be ready to go September 1 for next year in, in electrical.
That's really great. I know, the schedule makes it a little difficult, but that's wonderful, the kids are having that opportunity.
And we've had opportunities for automotive to go out. Craig Moore has probably six students working with him at Quark right now after school.
That's great. The curriculum enhancements are wonderful. I think, I don't know if people understand how important those are, but they really make, they give the program such a richness that they're, it's really, really impressive to see, as are the post-secondary brochure. This is very impressive, too. I asked Mr. Segalor if I could have copies of that. So I, I think this is really great. Does anybody have any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, I'll take a motion to, by Mr. Santuro, seconded by Mrs. Cahill, so you are approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you both.
Thanks for the work on this. The next item on our agenda is the Early Childhood Education Program. Ms. Conley and Ms. Larry, I believe.
I'm Carrie Conley, I'm the Special Ed Team Administrator at the De La Caza Early Childhood Center, and I have Ms. Jennifer Larry, who is Special Education Coordinator. Thank you so much for having us. Tonight, we would like to present to you the Early Childhood Program Improvement Plan for the 22, 2324 school year. Thanks to all your support, our district provides an enriching program for children identified with special needs, as well as typically developing peers. Currently, we have three sites that offer pre-kindergarten classes for the children of Quincy, including Point Webster, Snug Harbor, and De La Caza. There are currently 382 students enrolled in our program. You can see the enrollment breakdown at each site on appendix A, page 17. The enrollment number will continue to rise as, throughout the school year, as students are referred to us for screenings and evaluations, and it is determined that the child is in need of services. At this time, I would like to share with you the reflection from last year's goals. You can reference the reflections beginning on page eight of the plan. Last year, the pre-kindergarten team added the Hegarty Phrenemic Awareness Program to supplement the existing pre-kindergarten curriculum. The skills taught through the program provide practice and exposure to prepare students for kindergarten. The program offers explicit phrenemic awareness instruction in a whole group format. The team created Google Slides with direct links to each lesson and videos for each week. This provided easy access to offer support for the teachers to implement the curriculum. The team participated in professional development related to the Hegarty program and utilized the supportive training videos on the Hegarty site. The pre-kindergarten team continued to use their existing progress monitoring tool to assess students' knowledge of letter names and letter sound correspondence, and last year, added rhyme recognition as part of their assessment tool. Also on page eight, we share the reflection from our second goal. The pre-kindergarten team utilized the district's PBIS monthly character traits to integrate the concepts through their play themes. One of the most effective ways to teach young children of a positive character trait is through play. Games, puppet play, and role-playing activities, just to name a few examples, allow children to explore different scenarios and practice character traits in a fun and engaging environment. The team also created a Google Drive that provided resources for each month's character trait to share. The monthly traits were also embedded throughout the school day during daily instructional activities. The team met its goal and will continue to integrate character education into daily curriculum lessons. On page nine, you can see the reflection from our kindergarten math goal last year. With the support of Kim Quinn and the Math Interventionist, during the school year 2223, the kindergarten teachers fully implemented the illustrative mathematics IM Core Math resource. They participated in trainings on the IM digital platform in September of 2022, and the kindergarten teachers utilized IM to meet the academic standards in the 2017 math curriculum frameworks for mathematics. Throughout the school year, they analyzed data using the unit checkpoint checklist and end-of-unit assessments with their building ILTs. They use this data to develop support and interventions as needed. At this time, Ms. Jennifer will share the early childhood goals for this upcoming, for the 2324 school year.
The early childhood goals for the 2324 school year begin on page 10. Goal number one continues to build on last year's literacy goal. For the last few years, the pre-kindergarten team has received training in the same literacy tools that are used in the elementary school in order to provide consistency in their literacy education. This year, the integrated pre-kindergarten teachers will continue to work on teaching sound-symbol correspondence utilizing the hand-to-mind materials. On page 11, goal number two focuses on training the integrated pre-kindergarten teachers on the new IEP improvement project. Up to half of the students in the integrated pre-kindergarten classrooms receive special education services. Therefore, the teachers are a vital part of the IEP team. They will work closely with their team administrators to ensure that they are prepared for full implementation of the new IEP in September of 2024. On page 12, goal number three focuses on pivotal response treatment, or PRT. PRT is a naturalistic intervention model derived from Applied Behavior Analysis, or ABA, that targets pivotal areas of a child's development, such as motivation, responsiveness to multiple cues, self-management, and social initiations. As part of our partnership, staff from South Shore Autism Center will train the integrated pre-kindergarten teachers on motivational strategies such as changing cues, using multiple cues, shared control, child choice, and turn-taking to promote individual, small group, and whole group engagement during classroom activities. The early childhood education team is proud of the work we have done to support our district's youngest learners, and we look forward to continuing to build their social, emotional, and preschool readiness skills to help prepare them for success in kindergarten. Thank you for your time, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Santuro?
I'm just curious about the new IEP form. Can you share anything about the differences at this point?
Sure, so Ms. Conley, and Ms. Graham, and Ms. Buckley and I all went to the state Train the Trainer training back in October. The new form looks pretty different from the old one. All the information's posted on the DUCY website on the, if you search for the Massachusetts IEP Improvement Plan, there's a sample of a blank form up there, as well as a couple of student samples, one for a preschool student and one for a high school student. It's very student-centered, so the very first thing on the first page is asking what the student's vision is for themselves, and then the rest of that first page is asking adults how they're going to support the student and their vision. So for every single child from age three to 22, we're going to ask them what their vision for themselves is. And then it's just, the layout is very different, the way the accommodations and modifications are set up. They look at specific areas, and you have to break each accommodation and modification down into what type of, of support it is for the student. The current performance information is in a different location, it really looks a lot different.
Did they ask for any input from yourself?
They asked for input through the state, and I don't know, Erin, if you know more about this, but it's been a process over the last several years, so they had some, districts were early adopters, and then, and they have been using it over the last couple of years, and everybody needs to implement it by September of 2024. So we're going to take this year to train all of the staff, so that everybody's ready to use it by September, because it's a lot different.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Gotch?
I just had a question. The, and the school committee is going to talk about goal setting next year, but one of the things that I brought up and that we've talked about before is universal pre-K. I know that Governor Healy is looking at investing in different ways to get to a path to universal pre-K, so I didn't know if either superintendent, assistant superintendent, or either of you want to speculate or, or talk through, you know, a kind of a path to how we might get there.
I can see Erin getting on. Erin can talk about, obviously, it's going to come down to funding and space for us, and we can do it, and of course, staffing, which is hand-in-hand with funding. But Erin and I have been talking about the potential of that, this happening, and we've heard rumblings at the federal level, and we've heard, you know, obviously rumblings at the state level, as you referenced Governor Healy's initiative, so if the state or federal government wants to fund it, we can do it. But I know Mrs. Perkins will have some more information for you.
Yeah, I think, I think that fund, like the superintendent said, funding and space would probably be our biggest challenge. I mean, you know, I think that education for our youngest children is a wonderful thing. I also think that there's the possibility that they may look at partnering with, like, private pre-Ks as well. I know I've heard the state, you know, at that level, like, talking about things like that, so it might not necessarily all be that they're in a, like, a public school setting, it could be a partnership with some private pre-Ks also. So I'm not sure, because I think every district is going to struggle with the space and the funding, because not only do you need the teachers, but you also need paraprofessionals in all of those classes, so I think there's a lot of logistics to figure out there. I think if they can figure it out, I think it would be a wonderful thing, because it levels the playing field. All of our students would come to us with the same exposure and the same experience in, in an early childhood setting. Right now, we have students who come, some have the awesome, you know, opportunity of attending places like De La Caza or a private preschool, the YMCA, something, Campus Kinda House, all of these great programs that we have in our city or in our, in our area, and then some children don't have that opportunity to attend a pre-K or an early childhood program. And so I think that to be able to offer something to everybody, so that everyone gets that opportunity, would, would be, in the future, if we can figure it out, a great thing.
So I know that there's been a pilot grant program at the state level, and I don't know if any of our private providers or we have ever applied for, received any, any of the money around that?
We... We have grants through the state, but I don't think we have anything for universal pre-K right now, no.
Ms. Cahill?
Yeah. I love what you said about, you know, pre-K would have everyone on the same level playing field when they came into, you know, kindergarten, all having the same skill set. And I'm looking here, and I don't know if I did this right, but you have 35 kindergarten teachers and 35 paraprofessionals in the system based on this list.
But some of those would probably be also the CARES teachers, too.
So total, and you'd probably need close to the same.
Oh, and kindergarten, I think, is in there, too.
That's kindergarten staff, right? Just 35. And then paraprofessionals to support. So now you're talking 70, you know, professionals, and that mimics, you know, what we would need for pre-K.
Yeah, sorry, I misunderstood the question.
We'd have to do students with disabilities, too, which would, that would, that would be huge.
Between space and...
And right now, the regulation is 15 students, a teacher and a paraprofessional for pre-kindergarten.
Yeah.
So that's also obviously a challenge.
Yeah. Uh-oh.
I have seen that the state is offering some support to non-public preschools to expand their pre-K. I have a couple of questions. First of all, I mean, I can't wait to talk to the SPED PIP to figure out that IEP thing, because that fascinates me, that they're going to ask a three-year-old what their vision is, and you're all going to plan for all these firemen and ballerinas.
Yeah.
Should you be encouraging them to be picking, like, astrophysicists? Is it okay? You know, and what's this, I don't, it's probably a wonderful thing. I'd love to hear what those schools that piloted think, but it seems really like it's going to be a different vision every two years if somebody's growing that much, doesn't it?
I think that will be the case. I think it will be a different vision as students grow up.
You don't want to be going too far down the road of ballerina. There's a chance that kid might want to be a scientist in a few days. So I'm fascinated to hear that. I have one question about the PRT program. This is the first time I've heard of the PRT program. I was wondering if, we usually look at things that are evidence-based, and I know ABA has got some questionable reviews, I guess the word I'm looking for. So I'm not really, is PRT sort of a softening of ABA?
Let you talk about that. It's part of the, it's, ABA encompasses a whole range of teaching methods, and a lot of people, when they hear ABA, think of the discrete trial parts where you sit and say, "Show me red, show me red, show me red." And it's, you're really training skills, like, outside of a functional context. So PRT is much more functional. It's how to incorporate support and learning into actual play activities that the kids are doing, so.
So it is a softer approach than the...
Yeah, a little different approach, so it's more in naturalistic teaching setting than just sitting and drilling.
I would love a chance to see it in action once you get it up and running, just to, I think, even if you brought a video, whatever would work best for you people, but I'd love to see that and see what the difference is. My other question, this is just a strange question. On page 17, what is a drop-in and what's an articulation group?
So some of our students for speech therapy in particular, so some of the drop-in students, so if they qualify for, say, like, speech therapy, just speech therapy, or just occupational therapy, oftentimes we'll often offer spots and programs, but for some families, the hours of our program are challenging based on childcare. So if they're still eligible for therapy, but the parents tell us they don't want to participate in the program for, you know, many reasons why it may not work for them, they're still eligible to come for us for the therapy piece of it. So they may come in just for a half hour of speech therapy or a half hour of occupational. And then for the students with articulation disorders, who are those kids who are pronouncing their sounds incorrectly, for those kids, we offer a once-a-week 90-minute group that's intensive focus on producing their sounds. So a lot of those kids don't have any other special education needs, so they didn't need any classroom goals or any other services, so we just did this one intensive. And I actually started that program back when I worked at Dela Quiza with Carrie. I was the first speech pathologist that ran that program, and we set it up so they focused on a different sound every week and work through to help the kids improve their intelligibility, so we can understand them when they're talking.
And I'd really like to see the continuity with the illustrative, whatever that math is.
Illustrative math, yeah.
The continuity in having the kids see those, I think they're just going to get more out of it if they've not seen something different before that. So thank you very much. This is great. Anybody else? Questions? Comments? I'm sorry, Mrs. Buckley.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if you had any feedback from parents on the illustrative math program.
Well, we actually had a parent academy last night, and it was, I think it was very successful and actually very well-received. I spoke with, I know Mike was there, and I spoke with Kim this morning, and about, I think about 50 parents came. I reviewed the feedback this morning. Feedback's actually excellent. And so I think that what we would like to do is potentially offer that again. It was a little bit different than how we do traditional parent academies. We actually, they set up stations, and so the parents worked in, like, small-group stations like we would do in a classroom. Parents solved actual illustrative math problems. We had the IM consultant that was there with us, and I think it was, the parents really enjoyed it, and I think they got a lot out of it. So I think what we'd like to do is bring her back again, because I think now the word will get out that this was, it went really, really well. And I think that if we offer it again, we might get even more people. But, so I think that initially, I think the change in the way that we teach math, I think people are very focused on the fact that they don't, there's a misconception that we're not teaching the standard algorithm, but we are teaching the standard algorithm, but we are trying to build that concept knowledge. And so I think that this went a long way to help parents understand why we do the things that we do, you know, in the math classroom, and that we're building a math community where it's okay for, you know, people to have a wrong answer. It's that you can persevere, and you can attack that problem, and you can figure it out. You have the skills you need to be able to figure out that math problem. And so, you know, that's, you know, kind of where we're trying to go. And so I do think that that really helped, and I think that people left feeling really good about the program. And so I think we'd like to just do more of those things to help parents get a better understanding of what their students are experiencing when they're in the math classroom.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rubegoli?
Yeah, a question about the physical therapists. We have one assistant.
We have three physical therapists and two physical therapy assistants.
Sorry.
Three physical therapists and two physical therapy assistants.
Sorry, one listed.
One.
On page 28.
One is hired directly by the district, one is hired through an agency, and one is hired through South Shore Collaborative.
Thank you.
To Mr. Rubegoli's point, I think we have asked before that we'd like to see what the caseload is for our specialists across the board.
Yes.
We can share that.
At some point in time, if we can get that. Anyone else?
With approval. With approval.
Move approval by Mr. Santuro, second by Mrs. Cahill, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wonderful job, thank you. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you. Move on to our Special Education Program Improvement Plan, and when Ms. Graham is all set, she can take it away. With her team.
Thank you, Mrs. Hubley. Am I on here? It's an honor to be with you tonight to share the Special Education Program Improvement Plan for 2023, 2024. The Quincy Public Schools Special Education Team has the privilege of helping students with unique abilities, struggles, achievement levels, reach their fullest academic potential. We are committed to providing all of our students, and especially our most vulnerable students, with access to high-quality educational opportunities and high academic expectations to ensure our greatest equity in educational outcomes. We recognize that each student we work with has individual academic abilities and achievement levels, as well as strengths and needs. The Special Education Team is supported by Jen Leary, Special Education Coordinator, and team administrators Donna Cunningham, Katie Carey, Simone Buckley, and Jill Karanas, who work in our schools in district, as well as supporting students in our out-of-district placements as well. We currently serve over 1,800 students within our integrated pre-K classes, resource rooms, substantially separate rooms, inclusion settings, alternative programs, in our out-of-district placements. The Special Education Team recognizes that our students, families, and caregivers are valuable partners and help to create a rich educational experience for our students. Quincy Public Schools has an active Special Education Parent Advisory Council, part of which are right behind us, who meet as members quarterly with the Special Education Subcommittee of Quincy Public Schools Committee, as well as monthly for support and informational programs. The Special Education Team is proud of the work that we have done and completed during the 2022, 2023 school year, and are thrilled to share with you the Program Improvement Plan for 2023, 2024. I'm going to begin with the reflections of 2223, starting on page seven. The elementary team goal was to show evidence of achievement in math as measured by a total increase of three percentage points in exceeding and meeting achievement levels from spring of 2022, as evidenced by spring of 2023, for students in grades three, four, and five. Students in grade three increased an average of 4.8 achievement percentage points. Students in grade four increased an average of zero percentage points, and students in grade five increased an average of 1.5 percentage points in the exceeding and meeting expectation levels from spring of 2022. Although we did not meet this goal for all three grade levels, we are encouraged by the growth that we did see in grade three. The Special Education Math Team will continue to work with Kim Quinn and the Math Interventionist to closely monitor student growth and outcomes using one or more systems of measures, including the NWEA MAP, Georgia Numeracy Project Diagnostic Assessment, and the math running records.
Also on page seven, you can see that the middle school and high school special education teachers met their goal by meeting with all students on their caseload to administer a transition planning assessment, such as, but not limited to, the learning style inventory, work-job preference, and skills assessment, to formulate their transitional planning form. The transitional planning form was then shared at their annual IEP meetings. On page eight, the post-secondary team at Quincy College supported three LEAP students who took courses for college credit instead of audit at Quincy College. Additionally, there were five students who participated in clubs at Quincy College, such as art, drama, business, and running. Although the team was not successful in building the mentor program, they will continue to work with Quincy College staff on developing the mentor program during the 2023, 2024 school year.
Also on page eight, the language development team met with Landmark Outreach to conduct several whole-group trainings and individual classroom observations and debriefs. All of the elementary LDC classrooms implemented the same subject color-coded system utilized at the middle school level in order to create consistency across grade level and building level transitions. In collaboration with Landmark Outreach, the LDC team also created a Google Sheet that allows them to progress-monitor each student's writing skills. This information is shared in a Google Drive so all team members can access and utilize these materials.
On page nine, the CARES and Learning Center team participated in additional training sessions from the New England Center for Children on the implementation of the Autism Curriculum Encyclopedia. Teachers utilized ACE to collect data on three students in their class and use this data to inform progress on IEP objectives. Teachers also began using the lessons in ACE as a foundational part of writing the student's IEP goals and objectives. Although all students have a profile in ACE, staff have found that the utilization of ACE is most effective when using it with students who have one-to-one support for their whole school day on their IEPs.
Also on page nine, you will note that the GOLs team successfully returned three students to their home school in Quincy Public Schools. Three students graduated and were connected with Mass Rehab Commission. Two enrolled in Job Corps or Youth Works, and four decided to leave school to pursue their high set. Over the course of the 2223 school year, 21 new students transitioned into GOLs, while 19 students remained from the previous year. Each student, their parents, outside stakeholders, and other Quincy Public Schools personnel met monthly to plan for their entrance to the program and to identify individual barriers to success. The attendance officer and probation officer provided ongoing updates regarding efforts to increase individual student attendance, and three CRAs were filed based upon the collected data.
On page 10, our speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists participated in training about representing all students in therapy materials and resources used during individual and small-group sessions. They also attended professional development regarding the use of neurodiversity-affirming language, which focuses on students' strengths. The SLPs, OTs, and PTs then created resources in order to support generalization of skills to the classroom setting through collaboration with classroom teachers. Examples of materials they developed include Google Forms shared with teachers to gather information regarding general language functioning in the classroom, teacher rating scales to gather specific information regarding classroom carryover, and self-rating scales for students to use in the classroom as a reminder to utilize the skills they learned in small-group sessions. Also on page 10, the Behavior Support Team, which includes BCBA's from Melmark, hosted six professional development opportunities facilitated by the BCBA's from Melmark for 27 paraprofessionals from across the district. Topics included an overview of ABA, managing challenging behaviors, functional communication training, prompting and reinforcement, teaching using ABA, and visual supports. Additionally, 16 paraprofessionals have enrolled in the Registered Behavior Technician Course.
On page 11, the Special Education Team collaborated with EIT Department, team chairs, special educators, and related service providers to streamline the IEP progress report publication process. The Special Education Team met with IT to develop a publication schedule and a process protocol. The team identified dates when the progress reports needed to be published in Aspen to coincide with the publication of report cards for DESI regulations. The IT department publishes those reports so that families can view them in Aspen at the end of each term.
Also on page 11, the Special Education Team worked closely with the CPAC to support their trunk-or-treat and gingerbread house events. With the support of the CPAC, the Special Education Team successfully hosted Sing, Explore, Create for after-school programs at Snug Harbor and Quantum Elementary School for students in our elementary players' classes. Additionally, Sing, Explore, Create joined us during both February and April school vacation weeks to provide vacation program to any student in the district who receives special education support. Starting on page 16, we will now share with you our goals for the 2023, 2024 school year. As previously mentioned, for the first time since 2001, DZ has created a new IEP form. This new form is to be fully implemented for the 2024, 2025 school year. For the 2023, 24 school year, it is the goal for our elementary, middle, and high school teams to participate in training of the new IEP Improvement Project. As you can see by the professional development calendar on page 47, the teams will work closely with their team administrators and the IT team to take the necessary steps to be fully prepared for implementation in September of 2024.
On page 17, as a continuation of last year's goal, the post-secondary team at Quincy College LEAP program will continue to work on developing a peer mentoring program with the support of Quincy College, with the goal of having at least five Quincy College students engaged in the mentor program. The program liaison will work with the staff at Quincy College to recruit students, train them, and facilitate engaging activities.
On page 18, the language development class teachers will meet with general education teachers around the implementation of Core Knowledge Language Acts, CKLA.
The LDC teachers will align the scope and sequence of CKLA with best teaching practices for students with language-based learning disabilities, being sure to incorporate the appropriate modifications to differentiate instruction based on student need.
On page 19, similar to the pre-K, the CARES and Specialized Learning Center teachers will attend trainings with the South Shore Autism on the implementation of the Pivotal Response Treatment. The teachers will then use PRT strategies to promote engagement of students during individual, small-group, and whole-group instruction.
On page 20, you will see the GOLs team will be working to develop and implement a new core offering that will teach important life skills, such as budgeting, purchasing, applying for jobs, financial literacy, interest inventories, creating resumes, MAs, and college and career readiness.
On page 21, as part of the new IEP form implementation... On page 21, as part of the new IEP form implementation, the related service providers will participate in professional development on writing strength-based current performance statements and SMART goals. Shifting away from a deficit-based model to a strength-based model is a core component of providing neurodiversity-affirming supports for students. This ties in with DESI's goal of using the updated IEP to build on individual student strengths. Staff will use information regarding their students' abilities, interests, and preferences to write strengths-based SMART goals. On page 22, the Behavior Support Team will continue to train our paraprofessionals by providing six professional development sessions for two hours each during the school year. Unlike last year, this PD is part of the paraprofessional contract. Additionally, there are 16 paraprofessionals that have enrolled in the Registered Behavior Technician Course. Once they complete the online coursework, each paraprofessional will participate in a competency review with one of our BCBA's.
As you can see on page 24, this year, we are excited to create a new team for special education, the Rick de Cristofaro Learning Center Design Team. This team is comprised of myself, Assistant Superintendent Perkins, Ms. Leary, Mrs. Conley, our CPAC board, and other members of the community. This team meets as a whole body once per month, with mini-meetings in between. The goal of this team is to take the necessary steps to complete the initial application for the DZ approval of a Massachusetts Public Day School Special Education Program. As you can see on page 60 of the appendix, each month, the team has set small goals with a completed application as our final goal for this year. Finally, you can find our last goal on page 25. This is our goal with the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, and is a continuing goal from previous years. Although we have seen an increase over the past few years, it is always going to continue to be our goal to work closely with our CPAC to increase family engagement. The Special Education Team is proud of the work we have accomplished last year, and we look forward to implementing the 2023-2024 Special Education Program Improvement Plan. At this time, we'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Maybe my colleagues that are on the subcommittee have... Tina, go right ahead. I'm sorry, Ms. Cahill, go right ahead.
So much work. That's why we need all of you, you know?
And many, many more beyond this table.
Behind that table. It's amazing, and to be honest, from my perspective, it's a lot to really look at and try to understand all the work that you really do every day. And I appreciate it, so I wanted to say that. And I'm really happy to see the BCBA paraprofessionals taking advantage of that. That's great, because you said you wanted five, and you have how many that are taking it?
Sixteen.
So that's great. That was one of my questions prior. My other question is, one of your goals last year was 100% participation in the Aspen, putting all the information into Aspen. Is that... Where are we at now? Are we at 100%? Or is everyone participating and putting the information into the system?
With the teachers and the progress reports? Oh, with the progress reports. I'm so sorry. Yes, absolutely. So previously, there was not a... It was kind of one of those COVID keepers, to be honest with you. Progress reports were handed to families as a paper document at report card conferences, and many families during COVID were not physically attending report card conferences. And there wasn't a systematic way for families to then have those progress notes published for them. And so we've worked with Dan Pacho and the IT team to have a real systematic protocol of dates, similar to report cards, of when progress reports need to be submitted into Aspen so then they can be published. And now, when report cards are published, progress notes are published as well, so that parents have all of that information ahead of time.
Yeah, great, because I think that's so important, especially, you know, the progress reports and everything, to see where their children are.
Well, and it certainly helps a family that if a student's grades, you know, may not necessarily reflect all the amazing progress they've made on their IEP.
Right, so that's good. So that was a question there. And I think that's... And the PRT, the Pivotal Response, is that something that you're being trained on now and not implementing, planning to implement in September? Or are you implementing that now?
So we're implementing it as we go. So we've been working in collaboration with South Shore Autism Center. It's something that they use there. As, you know, you had previously asked with Ms. Leary and Ms. Conley, it is a research-based program that comes out of Stanford. And Michelle Sullivan, who is one of the women who runs the Social Autism Center, she has been doing the training for us. And it's really, as Jen mentioned, a naturalistic way to approach supporting our children with autism and other disabilities. And so we started the training back in October, and we've been checking in on them as part of their kind of ongoing check-ins with us, but also as part of their individual teacher evaluations, that they've made goals around that as well.
Yeah, that was one of my questions, was, you know, how do we evaluate that? Is it part of, you know, going in and watching the instructors and kind of get an evaluation that way and assessing? And then probably will take some time to see if it's really effective. And I would think that as a teacher, you know, in the very beginning, you have to really train yourself to think in that way, you know, if that's how you can instruct or present something in a classroom. So I can't imagine that it happens quickly, you know? But that would be my thing, like, how do you assess the impact in the classroom?
When we go in for observations, we specifically say, could you offer us a time where you are going to be utilizing these skills? And then also, Social Autism has said if there is any teacher that may potentially be struggling a little bit, they're happy to come in and do a little bit more one-to-one coaching outside of that large group professional development. And I anticipate, especially as we move towards the new learning center, that that's just going to be an ongoing, kind of a tweaking of professional development every year.
As you go. And from my own understanding is we have the different levels of, you know, disabilities and things. And we have emotional. So can you give me an example or a definition of what an emotional issue would be and what an intellectual difference? Because there's so many different categories, and I'm just trying to identify.
Yeah, so a student that has, you know, a disability is something that impacts their ability to access curriculum. So a student that has a social or an emotional disability, they may have anxiety, they may have depression, where an intellectual disability is truly a cognitive deficit.
Okay, and that would be different than like an academic, let's say, learning disability?
So a specific learning disability really looks at a specific area that that child is struggling with. Where an intellectual disability tends to affect that student globally across all developmental domains.
Great, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Bergoli?
Just to piggyback on Ms. Cahill, we have people at both high schools with emotional disabilities, correct? And North Quincy has the PASS program to address those. What does Quincy have?
Quincy High has their PACES program, but the PACES program is for children, primarily students that come from either the Cares program or from the LDC programs at middle school. But there are students that come from Quincy, like any other substantially separate program. If they're a student at Quincy High that we feel that their disability is such that it's significantly impacting their progress, we may recommend that they transfer over to the PASS program at North Quincy.
That's where I'm going.
Anyone else? Is this asleep? Oh, sorry, is this indoor?
Out of curiosity, of the 21 new students at GOLs, are they all Quincy kids? How many were outside of Quincy kids?
They were all Quincy students. They came from one of the middle schools, or they came from one of the two high schools.
Okay, nobody new to the system?
Let me see, I did have some data on that. There was, I think there were three that were move-ins, students who had, you know, IEPs that called for substantially separate.
Okay, second question. There seem to be a large number of kids at Snug Harbor from last year to this year compared to other schools. I think there are 27 student difference from last year to this year. How do we handle that?
So I think one of the challenges at Snug Harbor is that those numbers also incorporate our pre-K students. We don't differentiate when we look at the numbers. So that could be part of it. But also being mindful that our substantially separate classrooms, their populations can fluctuate throughout the school year. You know, there are students that we may not have identified at the beginning of the school year that do need to move into those classrooms as well. And so there are nine substantially separate Cares classrooms over there and two language development classes. So it does kind of balance out in the end. They're not all in one classroom.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just have a couple of questions. So I assume CRA is a new chin. When you say you file for, what does it actually stand for?
Child Requiring Assistance.
Child Requiring Assistance, so a child in need of services. Big change, big change. I'm fascinated by this Autism Curriculum Encyclopedia. Can you, I mean, can you, at some point, not today, but unless you can, I mean, show us what that really is. What does it look like?
Sure, sure.
Because I'm fascinated that something like that exists, and it's... So you don't have to present on it, but maybe you could send it to us to take a look at?
Sure, it's actually, it's an online platform that is super easy to access digitally from anywhere, so I can send you the link.
That would be great. And my last thing is, so I don't know who I spoke to this about, but I know we meant to ask this, and we may not have asked it out loud. It's probably more to Ms. Owen. But on the out-of-district students, can we get a copy of, not kids, but numbers in each location?
Sure.
Who's out and who's in and where they're going?
Absolutely. We have those numbers.
And since we've been doing all this work with Landmark, have we noticed any improvement in our ability to keep students in-house?
I can say for absolute certainty, in the seven years that I've been on this team, our number of students that are going out of district for specific learning disabilities has dropped significantly. We currently only have three students up at Landmark.
Wow, that is tremendous. And I think, you know, for my colleagues, can you explain about specific learning disability? Why are they not calling it by its name?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Why aren't they calling it by its name? A specific... I mean...
It's one of the things they talked about in the new IEP training. It was calling dyslexia dyslexias.
Calling it by its name, yeah. Wouldn't that be nice?
I knew that.
I'm good, thank you.
Anyone else?
I will say, thank you also for the description of all your programs that you added to the end of the presentation. That was really great to have. I'm going to keep it, you know? But thank you.
I just had a couple of questions. So one, our Teacher of the Deaf, have we hired for that position?
We actually chose to not hire it as a full-time position upon really close analyzing what the actual role was. We found that it could best be supported by using services from outside providers because it does not warrant a full-time position. So Katie has actually been working with both the Clark School, so we've done some contracting with them, and then I apologize...
It's the Learning Center for the Deaf.
Learning Center for the Deaf, so I can think of the second.
It's the Public Partnership, the PSP program. And so that's a program, the Public School Sponsored Partnership Program. So they can go out to districts and to provide that support through a contract. So we can use that as well, which we are in the works of creating that. The information for our students has now been sent to them, and we're starting to contract them coming into the schools and scheduling all those pull-out services that are required on the IEP.
And there's no problem with availability with their services? They're able to complete?
No, they actually have one woman they've designated to be here at least two days a week to provide those services.
And I meant to email you, and I didn't. So if you could get me the information, on the chart you have for demographics with the disability categories, you have vision and hearing as one. And it would be great to know how many vision, how many hearing, when, because I noted down that there's 26 vision, hearing, but I don't know which is which and at what school, so that we would have an understanding of.
Sorry, I'm stretching. I just want to make sure I can see.
Oh, no, I know, you got the monitor right there. So that would be really helpful for me to have that, or if it's a matter of... So to have a better understanding, that would be great to have that. So if you could email me that, that would be great, or to the committee, that would be great. So that was all I had. Anyone else? We can have a motion, a motion by Mr. Bergoli, a second by Ms. Cahill. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Before we get up, I just want to take a minute to recognize that tonight is Donna's last school committee meeting with us. After 34 years in the district, Donna is retiring on December 31st. We just want to publicly acknowledge her for the incredible work she has done for all of our children and families over 34 years, and just what a privilege it has been to work alongside you.
All right. Hi, everybody. We are part of the Quincy CPAC. One second, one second. Did he come to the door yet? He said food is okay. Thank you. All right, so we're going to continue on with our meeting. We have our Quincy Parents Advisory Council to Special Education here with us tonight with Ms. McGill and Ms. Wood to present, and also...
Darlene Wilson.
Thank you. Please go right ahead.
Yes, so I'll introduce Darlene as our... I was supposed to say translator. I don't know what. Maybe you are. Treasurer. And we are missing three of our board members. They couldn't come tonight. So we're just, you've got the three of us. I'm Sarah Wood, and I'm one of the presidents, and... She's our other co-president. And we are just coming here tonight to give you a little update on what we've been up to. We worked a lot over the summer, and we've been working really closely on getting ourselves as out into the public. I mean, every year, that's kind of been our big goal, is really trying to get parent participation. And I will say, we're feeling really positive so far this year. We've seen our numbers go up in meetings. The very first thing we have done is, you will notice, we've changed our name. We are no longer QPAC. We found that that name was not great for us. We got confused with a lot of other things in Quincy. QCAP, QCA, I mean, it was everything under the sun, so... Plus, this is more a name that goes in suit with the state. The state crew wants these programs created, and they want them to be CPACs, which is a Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. So we felt like this was the time. We switched over. We are now Quincy CPAC. And we changed our logo, just tried to spruce it up a little and make it a little more welcoming and a little more "now", I guess our kids would say, because it's got a nice little heart. But, so we implemented that over the summer, and we have tried to create... We've created new brochures and redone... We have a brand-new website created by our lovely Darlene that is set up and is working, and we're hoping to get some more traffic on that as the year goes on. So we've been doing a lot of work over the summer and are feeling really positive about where things are going. So, I'm sorry, I'm just going to go through my goal. So our goals for this year, we kind of gave you a little preview of them last year and kind of talked about what we had accomplished last year. But we are working, as Julie said, we are partnered with the district to insert parent representation as QPS prepares to open the Learning Center. We think it's vitally important that parents are representative in this plan because these students that you are hoping to, whether you're bringing them back into district or keeping them in district, they are going to require a lot of support. And parents need to feel secure, and they need to have trust and faith in this new program, that it's going to work for them. So I think the best way to create that is to bring the parents in and use them as a resource. Use us as parents. My son is 18. He's been out of district since he was nine years old, and he's thriving where he is. But he would have been one of your students you would have been looking at now to bring into this program. He probably would have been a good case study for you. But, so it's really important to have all that information and background from parents. And I feel like our design team that we have with Erin and Julie and that whole group is actually really beneficial, and I'm excited to see what we're going to have coming forward. So the other goal that we had, that we worked really hard on, and it was actually brought to us by Darlene. She went to Julie and spoke about this, was to create a standard to improve communication between caregivers and staff, starting with the Cares program. So I'm just going to let you, Darlene, talk about that?
So that came up as an issue from one of the parents that had a child in the pre-K program, with the pre-K Cares program. And we spoke about it at the end of the year last year, and Julie worked with us over the summer to create a new communication template that would work with the Cares program classes. We were able to have a few parents with kids in pre-K Cares classrooms and one with a Cares daughter in Squanton take a look at it. a CARES daughter in Swannum, take a look at it, review it, suggest additions, and then Julie was able to have her staff also review and suggest some additions, and we were able to finalize it for this school year. So it was a, a great win, quite honestly, quite, quick win.
Yeah. And I, I don't know if we've heard anything from, have we heard anything from parents about the new communication system? I, we haven't checked in.
No, but usually, yeah, we should. We usually hear when there's issues.
Yeah, we don't hear all the positive. We hear the problem. So the other thing we tried to work on this summer was transportation. Um, we, we hear things throughout the years for differing issues with transportation. So we did put out a survey, um, that, to identify gaps and see what's working and what isn't working for transportation. I will say, uh, we got, I believe Ginger, was it 24 parents?
We got 24 responses, which I thought was pretty low.
Yeah.
I think also some of the, the things that we learned from that particular survey was we have to do a better job at explaining when we're doing a transportation survey, what out-of-district means, because parents were assuming out-of-district was, I live in Quincy and my student might be going to Marymount, but now they're going to Snug, and they considered that to be out-of-district because it was not their home-based school, where we were really looking for true out-of-district placements outside of the District of Quincy. Um, so we did get just a small population of responses for that, but even that small population revealed for us that there are still, there are strengths. Um, this year, things went much, much better than they did last year, um, but there are still things that we could build on. So I think one of our goals is to really collaborate with the subcommittee on the transportation piece, to really find out how we can beef up recruitment, um, in regards to drivers, because that seems to be the biggest problem, just not having drivers for transportation, which results in students being picked up late, sometimes not picked up at all. So we really want to just continue on that collaboration to try to close that gap more.
And I think also on the transportation piece, one of the things we also saw is the communication. Um, a lot of parents, especially parents who have children who go out of, truly out of district, not out of Quincy district, um, my son goes to school in Hull, so he, I drive him, but, um, a lot of the students in his class are from Quincy as well, and they take the bus. And issues for them with transportation can be anything from driver issues, but what they, driver issues, on time, not on time, too many kids on the bus at one time, um, not enough staff on the bus. Um, so I think it would be really nice to try and get as much information from our out-of-district parents, because they're the ones who are seeing more issues than the, in-district, um, students. But I find that, I think transportation is an ebb and flow. Some years are great, some years are tough, and it, but I will say there was a lot of positive, especially about the actual bus drivers. But when it comes to communication, it's now become that parents are talking more to the bus drivers or to the bus companies, as opposed to talking to the transportation department, where it would be better for all of us and for you if parents spoke to transportation when something went wrong. So if a bus driver didn't show up, or no one contacted them and told them that they didn't have a bus for that day, they're calling the bus company, which really is not going to help them or anyone, because if they, if the school doesn't know that the children aren't receiving transportation, you can't do anything to try and fix it. And the bus company only has one job, and that's to get the kids to school, and if they can't do it, they can't do it. So, um, we're, we tried to, we worked with Julie and Laura, and we got the transportation booklets that are mailed out every year.
Yes. We identified a gap, the out-of-district parents were not receiving...
Out-of-district parents were not receiving...
The guides, who to contact, when to contact.
Or what issues to look out for.
Right. So we identified that gap.
Yeah, and it was great. Laura and Julie got all of the out-of-district parents a copy of that transportation booklet, and we're starting to try and communicate to parents out of district that if there is an issue, if something is happening, if your child is having a problem, if transportation is not, um, it's not working, or there's some discrepancy somewhere, contact your trans, city of Quincy Transportation Department first. That should be the first call, so that they can follow up and see what's going on, as opposed to trying to, to go through the bus company. So we're learning things through these type of surveys, and it's been, I mean, we're hoping to get more information, but, um, we also have all the slides, which we can pass on to you guys as well. So one of our other goals is to continue community engagement. We have been working, this year Darlene came up with a great idea to do a popsicle social. It wasn't hugely successful, but we're working on it.
First steps.
We're trying, yes. Baby steps. But that's our way, we're really trying to get more kids out in the parks and, and meeting other parents and really creating a better system of special needs parents supporting each other and being able to have a little network where, hey, if we're having an issue with this and some, just finding people that you can talk to or get some help from.
And that one in particular was targeted at the pre-K kids. So we found that, you know, up to this, but we've had a lot of events for the elementary and older-aged children, but we really didn't have anything to target the younger kids. And I feel like those parents, um, are in general less connected because their kids haven't made it into elementary school yet. So work in progress.
Yeah. And they have a lot more questions at this age, like, you know, three years old is a tough age. Um, but, so we, we had our trunk-or-treat plan this year. We had to cancel it. Horrible lovely rain. Um, but we do have our gingerbread decorating coming up a week from Friday, and we're really excited. I mean, I put it out, and within 12 hours, I had 25 people sign up already, so it's a big event for us, and parents love it, so we're really excited for that. So we have a lot coming up in the new year, and I, I think we're really excited about where things are going, so, um...
I think the next slides are just a trip.
Yeah, so I, yeah. All right. Uh, do you guys have anything else to add?
Uh, no, I think it was, um, so we mentioned that we identified that gap for the out-of-district parents, not getting the transportation booklet, um, so that has now been rectified, and we just see that, um, as not an ad hoc, but now as a continued process next year, that when the transportation booklets go out, they'll go out to both in, in district as well as out-of-district parents.
That's good. All right, I think we're good.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you so much for that. That was wonderful. It's great information. I just want to follow up one thing quick before we go on to questions. Um, so the gingerbread house night that you're doing, what is the, the date for that?
Uh, it's a week from, it's the eighth...
Eighth and the ninth.
And the ninth. On the eighth is kindergarten through fifth graders, and that's at 6:00 PM, and on the ninth, it's at 11:00 AM, and it's for sixth grade and up.
That was my next question. I was going to ask if you were doing the, you were doing the split ages.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so that's great, because I remembered you mentioned that last year, how you wanted to do that, and it went over so well.
Yeah.
Yes, so I was, I'm glad to hear you doing that again like that, because that was, that was a wonderful, wonderful thing that you, that you thought of doing that. That was great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Bergoli?
Yeah, there were two concerns you brought up at the end of last year regarding connections with the homeschool and their activities in the out-of-district, uh, our out-of-district kids. Does that improve?
Um, I think overall, I'll be honest, out-of-district is like another world. Um, I think we are just not, and it's no, I, I can't blame anyone, or it's just, we're not thought of. Our kids are not thought of, because they are just thought of as not here. And it, it is, it's a big, that's why I've been working so hard to try and create programs for, I mean, my son is 18 now. I'm in a whole new phase of life with him, but it's a phase where you realize that there's nothing out there. My son has no extracurricular activities. He doesn't have any friends in this community, because for all intents and purposes, he's grown up in another city, and his, all his siblings, he has three siblings, have their own friends, and, but it's a very difficult place for him. Um, so I'm really trying to build something for him here, um, and that's one of my huge goals this year. Um, you'll all be hearing from me. But, um, I really feel like if something happens between the age of 12 and 22, where our kids just kind of get dropped a little bit, um, and we have to pick them back up. So that's my goal. But yes, I, I do think out-of-district, I don't know how we bridge that gap, but it is a very big gap.
One thing I would say, Sarah, is that last year we did work with Julie and Erin to ensure that the Aspen...
Yeah.
Distribution list was updated and correct, and that all of the out-of-district parents were receiving the contact list updates to make sure their contact information was up to date. And so I do think we've been hearing from the community that more of the parents that have children with 504s and IEPs are receiving the updates that are intended for this, the parents of children with special, like, aren't IEPs, that usually are there the distributions that we're sending, with our events, et cetera, but I, that is one thing that I do think has improved, and it's like the beginning of bridging the gap.
Yeah. So to clarify, so we identified another gap where in-district kids get an annual contact card with their information. You update your telephone number, your address, your email. Out-of-district parents were not getting that. So when you send out your BLAST communication, out-of-district parents may have had a telephone number that changed or an email address that changed, and that information wasn't being captured or updated. So that was identified. I think there was 147 parents...
Yes.
...that were identified as out-of-district. They now, um, got, they're going to get the contact cards when the regular contact cards go out.
And I can, yeah, I can confirm that already happened.
Yes, it did happen.
This year. And last year, when this issue was identified, it was, you know, it was sent out at that time point mid-year, but then for the time this year, when we get it for all of our children in district...
Yeah, so there's true nice collaboration, you know?
An improvement.
We identify things, um, you know, taking the necessary steps to, to make a fix and, and move forward.
Yeah, agreed.
And the other concern you had was recreation programs during, yeah, the downtime, the vacation time. I spoke with the recreation director. She was supposed to be researching other towns and see what they do, and then she was supposed to, back to you.
Yeah, I, I'm just going to stick with what I know, because I'm not going to speak ill of anything, but Julie and Erin have been fabulous about helping us create programs during, um, April vacation, February vacation for all age groups. We had Sing, Explore, Create has been really great at coming and creating programs for our students. Um, and I'm now working on, actually, with, Julie and I had a meeting today with Nicole from Sing, Explore, Create about creating a teen program on Saturdays that would be run by someone from Sing, Explore, Create and from some of our choir and band students who are hoping will volunteer and become like peer mentors to these kids, and developing a real strong music art program. Um, so that's one of our goals, but that will be run, I, I haven't, I don't know how it's going to be run yet. We're still working on that, but, um, I, I'm only going to, I will say one thing. I have tried in the past to work with the rec department, very strict, I've tried really hard to be an ally, to be a support, to try and help get something going, and I have hit a wall every time. Um, so I, I, that's why I've had to move out to other resources, and that's fine, but I would, in the future, I would love to have the rec department support these kids. I think it would be fabulous across the board.
Yeah. There's also, um, as a CPAC board member, I entered the Stark Project Pitch Contest, um, and I'll know at the end of the month whether or not our project was selected, so that we can bring, the grant prize is $1,000, to bring a community project, um, for our special needs community to the city. Um, and then after that pitch, I get chosen, feeling really good. Um, you know, there is another pitch that I can enter into for $20,000. Um, so I'm taking that path to bring programs here.
That would be fabulous.
All set, Mr. Bergoli?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Cahill? Do you have, did you want to add?
Oh, no, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Mrs. Lee?
Just, just on that, when the commissioner was here, Dave Murphy was here, I specifically asked him to work on programs, and number one, the bike program, the Learn to Ride book...
Oh, yes.
And he said absolutely. So I think some of us, maybe Ms. Hubley and I, or some of us can go with you to the recreation department, and we'll talk to Commissioner Murphy first and say, because there's no, I mean, it's wonderful, the other stuff is wonderful, but there's no reason why we can't add those programs into the recreation department. And it's, and if I...
The bike program is such a...
It's, and I think we need to get on the schedule now, if we want to do it in April or the summer.
Absolutely.
Because it's, it's hard to get on the schedule for that, but that is a program that teaches students with even severe disabilities, bike riding, you know, which is...
Like in, like in three days.
Like three days.
It's not very short.
It's one program Monday through Friday, um, and it's for two hours each day, and the adaptability equipment. To see these kids start out just super scared, super afraid, you know, not having their balance, and they tweak these bikes for everything according to the size of your body, how your